All right. Calling the meeting to order. Due to the governor's statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and current health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending the meeting by video conference. Those same conditions require barring access to the public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public is invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated on the meeting agenda to comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings. Tonight's meeting is being recorded. If I could ask village clerk Gaten to take attendance and ask if everyone can be heard, that would be appreciated.
Trustee Borowski, can you hear me?
Aye, good evening, yes.
Thank you. And trustee Kritzmeyer, can you hear me?
Yep, yes, hello.
Thank you. Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Trustee Nora, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Excellent. Trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
And trustee Michaux, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent.
All right. If we could all say the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be appreciated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I know we don't have it on the agenda, but it's customary that we provide the Lake County Sheriff Police an opportunity to address the board. And I see that Sergeant Amber is here tonight and just wondered if he had anything to say to us. And you have to unmute, yeah?
I have a detachable keyboard here that was not cooperating. Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
All right, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, pretty well, pretty well. So I did not hear the initial question. If I had any new business for you, was that what it was?
Yeah, just so there's anything, we're doing one of the abbreviated agendas tonight because we've got three meetings in a row for personnel matters. So, but if there's anything you wanted to address with us or if there's any questions the board had, that would be great.
Well, first of all, I just want to let you know and pass out the word again, you know, now that the weather's getting nice, you know, these ruse burglaries start to tend up, start up this time of year. So, you know, just maybe put something in the newsletter or whatnot reminding people just to be very cautious if anyone tries to lure you out of your house, even if they look like a construction worker or anything else like that.
Has the sheriff put out anything that we could just repeat?
I can probably, I'll look for some literature. We had some, you know, just standard rules, do's and don'ts, you know, years ago, but you know, more or less, these guys are just driving plain pickup trucks and they're, you know, they want to seal coat your driveway or have you come out and, you know, look at the property line, something like that, anything to get you out of your house. And then there's usually, like I said, the other guys will go in for the 10 or 15 minutes or outside, so.
Okay, okay.
But other than that, I really have no other new business on my end. Any questions for you guys?
No, and I don't want to talk about the bridge, so, so no questions for me.
Okay.
Hey, Bill, did you catch up with Sherri? Did, were any invites go out to any HOAs? Just thought I'd ask. You're muted, by the way.
Doing a little research here. No, I did not catch up with Sherri. I assume they did not, however, we might have a call for people that might be present on the call.
Is anybody, is there any HOAs present tonight that were invited to the meeting? All right, if not, I'm going to, I'm going to move us along to really the very first item on the agenda, which is the continued public hearing for the draft fiscal year 2021 village budget. And I'm going to set this up, so bear with me a second. The hearing is being held in accordance with the state statute and notice duly published in the Daily Herald. The hearing has been continued from the village board meeting on March 23rd, at which time the village board heard public comments on the proposed general fund and capital fund elements of the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021, 22 budget. Tonight's meeting will be seeking public comment on the other funds to be included in the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget. Because these components of the budget have been going through refinement, they have not been available for a full 10 days before tonight. As a result, although we will be taking public comment on the funds portion of the budget tonight, the public hearing will be continued until April 27th, at which time we expect the budget hearing to be fully and finally complete and closed. Upon reopening the public hearing tonight, we will first have a presentation made by trustee Kritzmeyer and staff regarding the other funds portion of the budget. After that presentation, we will afford the opportunity for members of the public to comment on the other funds budget. If you wish to comment during tonight's public hearing, please use the raise your hand function or raise your hand this way or otherwise indicate somehow that you're interested in speaking. I ask that you wait to speak until I have acknowledged you. To make sure that everyone has had a chance to speak, we may limit you to three minutes, in which case you can have another chance to speak once everyone has done so. Note that the public comment period is for comments and not questions and answers, and that would be the same thing with the board at this point. After the public comments are completed, we will have a motion to formally continue the public hearing until April 27th. Anyone who speaks tonight can speak again on April 27th on the other funds portion of the budget. Once the hearing tonight is continued, the village board may then have a discussion regarding the draft budget. Please keep in mind that the draft budget is exactly that. It is a draft. As such, the draft budget may undergo changes based on the comments we hear tonight and further board's review. With those introductory comments, I now formally reopen the budget public hearing.
And you, this is, Anne, I was going to kick this off, but I think Bill Balling is going to kick it off at this point and then Denise, and then I will back clean up a little bit.
Do you want me to show anything yet or just wait?
Well, Denise will get into the other funds budget, but I just want to get a couple of introductory, although your summation comments at the front of the hearing, Mr. President, were excellent. Technically, we're continuing this issue because of the notice requirement that we, that we ensure that the full 10-day public posting, we actually had informal postings and notifications on the budget prior to that, but prudence would suggest that we wait until the 27th to close the, close the hearing and then also consider the final budget on the 27th. The, the aspects, there are a couple of points on the gentleman, this being in the public hearing, on the, on the, the budget that we had presented, the general funds and the capital funds, most specifically that we did increase the traffic management budget for Checker Road, put in a $25,000 capital fund for traffic management. That's a deal with cut-through traffic and other things that are associated with high volumes of traffic and cut-through and, you know, other than neighborhood type use. So that has been in there. I don't think we had that on reference. Denise, when she's done with her comments with regard to the, to the budget, we'll talk briefly about a, a new system, give an overview of a clear glove, excuse me, ClearGov application that will enhance the overall budget reporting for the village going forward. That'll be finalized again on the 27th and presented to the board. And, and then, and let's just say, well, as she mentioned, we'll have comments on the elements of the TIF budget, but Denise, for purposes of presentation, the other funds, if you could kick it off with us in terms of your presentation, please.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? All right. Good to see everybody and welcome any visitors that are here for the public hearing. I'm going to, before we start on the other funds, I'm just going to give a very, very quick overview of the ClearGov that manager Balling had spoken about. It's, we are looking at the village budgeting team has been looking at software because we have increased our IT budget, and so we've been looking at some different types of software. And there is a software called ClearGov, which is a both a transparency and budgeting software that basically automates the budget, the annual budgeting process. So, but we're going to be giving a presentation on this at the next budgeting meet, or the next board meeting. So what I want to leave you with today is just a, the quick overview of the fact of what I'm so excited about with, with this software. I mean, I actually feel very passionate about it because it's the most important aspect of a budget, a municipal budget in particular, is transparency. And what's really cool about ClearGov is the fact that it, it optimizes transparency both externally and internally. So essentially internally, we have, you know, our, our staff and our, you know, the village board and president, and we want anybody to be able to pick up this budget, and it's basically like an archive, you know, of all this really, really important information. So we want anybody, you know, say a village trustee leaves, we want the next trustee to be able to come in and really just be able to hand that off to them. And then the external transparency, which is, you know, vital, I mean, just absolutely kind of, I guess essential is the word, is that anybody can go to our website or ask for our budget and be able to understand that budget. And the way that ClearGov optimizes transparency is they use two very effective things, which one is the GFOA criteria, which is the government, the Government Finance Officers Association criteria, which, you know, I'd love to win one of those awards for our budget. It is a, just, their, their whole goal is to increase transparency and then basically increasing civic engagement. So there's that component, but then there's also ADA compliance, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so then you have a software that is absolutely compliant with, with ADA compliance. So really important. So we're going to dive into more details at the next board meeting. I won't go into any more of that, but if President Jacob, if you could pull up the first slide, and we'll, we'll move to the other funds. And the other funds, trustee Kritzmeyer and I will be walking you through different aspects of that, and we'll wait just a second till it's up. Okay, so just to start off with, there's a little bit of a new look to the other funds, and in a second I will show you that, but before we start, I just want to help everybody understand what we mean by the other funds, which is the Illinois 83 Downtown TIF Fund, which TIF is a tax increment financing, Illinois 83 Water SSA Special Service Area, Water Operations Fund, the Open Space Fund, and then the MFT Fund, which is the motor fuel tax. And I just, there's so many acronyms. I put those acronyms right up there. Some of the other ones are, if you see GF, General Fund, the NHMR is non-home rule, and I think I said OS, Open Space. So if you can go to the next slide. Um, a part of the new look, this is the Illinois 83 Downtown TIF Fund. A part of the new look is that on the, my right side here, in pink, you're going to see debt on that side, and you're going to see assets like equipment and land and depreciation. Those are going to be over there. And then on the other side, we're laying out the beginning balances, ending balances, and our revenues and expenditures there in between with a little bit more detail of what those revenues and expenditures are. But this is just so we can clearly see a surplus or deficit in that fund excluding all of those, the debt and the assets and the depreciation. It's just, I think it's easier for anybody to understand. And this is the Illinois 83 Downtown TIF Fund, and trustee Kritzmeyer is going to explain some details about this fund.
And so thanks very much, Denise. Everybody hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, good. I, so for the, all of the, all of the other funds, as Denise noted, you're seeing more detail, and the point of this is actually to help you understand, it's actually to simplify, even though it's more lines, more words, it's to simplify so you can understand where are the revenues coming from for this fund? What are the expenses that we anticipate for this fund? Either we know we're going to have to pay or our best estimate of what the expenses will be. And then on the right-hand side is sort of like the balance sheet, you know, what's the overall. So, um, our good news is that the TIF district this year, due to some increased valuations on certain properties like Harbor Chase, like the Archer Outlets, and like Sunset Grove and the various parcels in there, we expect and have already received some level of revenue for tax increment this year that we anticipate will continue for next year. And that's great news. So you see the actual there, sort of the third line down tax increment, $745,000, that has been received. And so our estimate is that that will, we don't anticipate new development at this point in the district, so we don't anticipate a big jump up. It would be great to be surprised on the positive side, but unless valuations take a giant nosedive, we anticipate something just a slight hair more than that for the next year. Um, when we refinanced, when we refinanced bonds last year, we know that we pledged some level of taxes to those bonds, the Sunset Grove Business District bond, uh, bond. So we're showing those pledged sales tax revenues in here, and that's where you see those revenues through in there. Um, and then variety, so there's basically regular sales tax, non-home rule sales tax. Expenditures, I, we anticipate that the sales tax and overall and part of that increment will be more than what is needed for servicing those refinanced bonds. And to the extent that there is additional sales tax coming in and out, we anticipate that there will be a transfer to the general fund because that sales tax and other sales interest will not be needed. Um, we do need to pay the principal and interest on those bonds. You can see in the actual $230,000 this year in principal, $105,000 in interest. So consequently, our obligation next year is 240 and 107. That leaves a surplus. And so this budget anticipates that we can start paying the open space fund, which would be the next in priority to be paid after those, after necessary expenses like legal and audit, after the principal and interest for those Sunset Grove bonds, which have the top tier in debt. The next step is open space fund. And so a re-ridges like a late fee, and that's the first to be paid out of any money available, then interest, then principal. And this still is a decision of the board. The money in the tax increment finance fund can be used for legal expenses of the fund, of the increment of the district, for paying for debt, which is other legal, you know, required expenses, or for TIF projects. Those are the three opportunities that we have for expenses here. And so what we did was say, all right, the re-ridges do a 377, the interest do to date is that, and then there's an opportunity to pay some level of principal to the open space fund. At this point, that would anticipate an ending balance of about $37,000. The payments, the debt owed on the right-hand side in that pink, when I went back to those ordinances, we must pay principal, interest and principal, we're obligated, the obligations are at least once annually, so it's really a once-a-year payment. The official payment due date is December 1st. So we will be setting this budget, but the official's payment date for principal and interest and so forth in those ordinances has been historically set at December 1st. So hopefully that helps outline some information here. I, any questions on either the presentation or on this, on this, on these TIF budget items?
No, this is really fabulous, Anne, and Denise, you did a great job on this, thanks.
Yeah, and I would ask that we keep the comments for the public now and then the board will.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're exactly right. I, apology, apology, Bill. So that is, that, that's really how you walk through. So the, the goal is to make this easy and linear, all right? So remember, our budget for this, we're forecasting a revenue and an expense budget. And so that's really what we're about here. I, consequently, you should see matching items here, the transfer out to the general fund, that, that also matches as a revenue into the general fund, a transfer in. Open space fund, you should see these matching items here. Thank you for whoever, whoever changed the slide. So I, these things match. Open space fund also receives money from permits, and I think Denise and, and intermanager Bill Balling, I, I might have worked with those planner Jim Hogue, but basically estimating at this point, one new house. It may be more, we may have more people mapping, but right now that, that 4,500 in permits is one, the open space payment for one new house. And then the other things that I just discussed from the test.
Yeah, there we go. There was some highlights with the motor fuel tax fund, just to kind of illustrate that we pulled apart the rebuild Illinois grant and the motor fuel taxes, just so that you can see, because we will be receiving two equal payments from, for the Illinois, the rebuild Illinois grant, and that'll total that 176, 688. And then generally, we get about $25,000 a month, it's monthly, yeah, that, that totaling that 300,000 for the, the motor fuel taxes. And then there's an estimate, estimate of about $375,000 in the road expenditures that we, that we would be, would be coming from that fund. So, so those are kind of the highlights of the other funds. Does anybody have any questions?
I would comment also, motor fuel tax is required to be in its own fund, and the rebuild Illinois grant also said requires us to put that money in the motor fuel tax fund, but because it's a grant, it gets handled differently in accounting. So throughout the year, when we see the value of that fund, we actually won't see the value of the grant money. All kinds of learning as we've gone through this. And to Denise's point, on the ClearGov, it's, it's actually both software and service. It comes with an extraordinary amount of service, which is a good thing, and should go into that, but I will tell you that I've spent well over 50 hours on this. I'm sure Denise and, and Bill have spent, you know, more than that. And to the extent that we can have a place that helps improve transparency and understanding, as well as archive and automate a fair amount of the process, including in and out of the accounting system, that'll save a lot of time on either staff or volunteer time.
So I guess at this point, if you're done with your introductory remarks, I would like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to comment on the budget from the public. You can raise your hand, you can speak out loud, whatever. Or you can be quiet. I'll give it a second for those to think up their questions. All right, I think silence means that there's no one that wishes to comment. So then what I'd like to do is request the board to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the other funds portion of, of the fiscal year, the other funds portion of the budget for the fiscal year 2021 budget until April 27th, 2021.
So moved. Okay, so I. Are we, are we continuing just the other funds or all of it?
Well, I'm, I'm following.
We're going to have to, because we only have one budget, although we break it down from the statutory perspective, we have but one budget. So until the hearing is completed, we can't consider the budget. So that'll be kicked over to the 27th. Certainly, you can review this and come to whatever generalized conclusions you wish tonight, but the formal vote will have to be deferred until the 27th.
Right, my point is, I think we're, we're continuing the public hearing on the whole budget and all of its pieces, and I.
For purposes of the, I'm sorry for interrupting. For purposes of the hearing, we did close the capital and general fund budget because that had the 10-day, those elements had the 10 days. So the continuation of the hearing is limited just to the other funds, but no consideration of the budget ordinance and the overall budget approval can occur until the 27th, when the whole hearing is concluded.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so that was moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Connor. That's how I heard it, and that's a roll call. And that, and so the motion on the table is to continue the public hearing on the other funds portion of the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget until April 27th, 2021.
All right, trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Nora?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. J.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Now that the public portion of the hearing is concluded for tonight, I now open up this matter to the village board for any comments that you might have on the draft budget.
I, I, I just have to commend these three for how they have brought what was Greek to English. And, and it, it is.
Can't use that term anymore.
What?
Just keep going.
Don't try to fix me, Bill. Because this, this has so many aspects to it. One thing I love in it is having the debt showing, because frequently you can see all the razzle-dazzle, but if you don't know what the debt is, you're not getting the whole picture. So kudos to all of you. It's fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Other comments, questions? All right, let me, let me ask a question too, and I think Anne and I went back and forth a little bit right now, right? So the Archer lots funding that we got from Sunset Grove, right? That is in, is that being used to go back and pay off the open space fund per this budget, or where is that money?
Can you go, can you go back to the TIF fund page, please? Okay, so if you look at the beginning balance right now, it's showing a beginning balance overall of 619,000. That includes the one-time payment for the Archer lots that we require, we went through with legal and accounting and decided it needs to be in the TIF fund. So that is in there, and so yes, that is part of that. So the money that's available is partly that, which is a one-time deal, and then the ongoing increment, and the fact that we refinance the Sunset Grove debt, and therefore more of the increment is available. And then the, if you see that transfer from general fund, sounds like a lot of in and out of general fund, by state statute, when you're a non-home rule municipality, it's up there in the revenue, 74,885, that will be made this year, by the way. The village must kick in an amount equal to 10% of the increment overall. So since we've expected 74,000, 748,000, we will have to make a transfer in, and a contribution to the TIF district, if you will, and that's part of the TIF law. So those four items, if you will, the one-time, the ongoing tax increment, the fact that there's now a more meaningful amount of money that needs to come from the general fund, and the fact that more of that increment is available, those are all contributing to the ability to start and making these payments. Does that answer your question, Bill?
Well, yeah, so I mean, essentially then, we're, we are taking the money to use to pay off the open space fund debt, right?
Yeah, if I can jump in, Anne, I think if you look at the last three lines on that page, you'll see in the, in the 21, 22 column, I can't see the numbers, it looks like 377, 738, and 150 or something akin to that.
Yes, yep.
Those are the numbers of paying off the, what we call the open space bonds. Now, the, the bonds actually have designations, but that's how we've always referred to them. Nothing in this budget would preclude the village from, from restructuring some of that, as has been discussed in confidential memorandum, but that's something that the board hasn't yet made any kind of conclusion on, and this is just a representation of what would be paid to those. It's a question then of, of what ownership of those bonds and whether there's any kind of arrangements. what ownership of those bonds and whether there's any kind of arrangements to be made.
I agree. Vic is right. So the the TIF district basically has three layers of debt and with specified seniority. Top seniority are the Sunset Grove Business District bonds. The next in seniority are really the Series A bonds, which right now the open space fund owns. In a sense, the open space fund owns, has a municipal bond investment. Um, and then the third in priority are the Series B bonds of the TIF districts. Uh, so uh, it it might make more sense to say paid to the Series A uh, bondholders would be the more accurate. And so what Vic is saying is that would be the amount available for that under current situation where we have an arrears rate of two percent and an interest rate of four percent. Um, because these are annual payment, we uh, we're budgeting at this point. Um, and to Vic's point, I investments are a non-open, you know, are different discussion, but we could restructure that. But this is the amount that would be available.
Okay.
Am I reading this correctly, that of the one million five hundred thousand to be paid back in the Series A bonds? The print we're in this year, we're planning to pay a hundred and fifty thousand of that principal. The rest, the rest of the monies are interest and arrears, just right. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is, that is correct. That's all that's available. Principal has to be is paid after arrears and interest.
Right.
Yeah, but you know what's interesting about that? The um, then that money goes, that goes into the open space fund. So then that money is actually available to be used, right? So it's, you're like paying yourself interest that that then you can use to to buy land if you wanted to, right?
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It it, it can use in any way the open space fund chooses. Or we choose on behalf of the open space fund per guideline.
Right.
And and we have to decide, not tonight, but maybe next meeting. Whether we dump all of this into the open space fund. Is that correct?
You probably have a little more flexibility than that, Rita, uh, in terms of when you would trigger that. Because this is a, this is a budget. I don't think when we adopt a budget, we have to do that, because the budget would be subject to amendment. Um, and I'm I'm not sure we anticipated uh, exactly when these, you know, the payment would go back. But I think we have flexibility beyond the next meeting to do that and address that.
But they're, yeah.
Technically, with the bond payment due in December, that decision can be deferred until December.
Yeah.
But uh, the board more or less can can do it at any time. With the exception of the principal payment due in December, all of the arrears and interest can be made at any time. Because most of those are are back, uh, you know, our amounts that are are uh, past due.
Past due.
Right. But I guess the point I'm making is if it sits in the general fund, if that sick trustee dies, the new trustee assumes this is general fund money. Even though, even though on this space, it says that it is open space money. But if it was actually in the, in in the open space bucket, shall we say, then everybody knows, okay, this is, this is, these are monies available to buy whatever we think we need to buy or whatever we, whatever to do with it regarding open space. Is that correct?
Well, I'm not sure where you got general fund in there, Rita, because that has nothing to do right now.
Well, what, if you had to say what bucket it's in now, what bucket is it in?
Right now, it's still in the TIF bucket.
TIF.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the TIF bucket uh, can be used, that amount of the TIF bucket can be used to pay off the Series A bonds.
Right.
Ownership of the Series A bonds is really what the other conversation apart from the budget still needs to occur.
All right. But I I guess what I'm saying is I, I am, okay, that I I was under the impression it was sitting in the general funds. Bucket. So is there a reason it isn't in the open space fund bucket? Or do you feel, do you feel that it is in the open space fund budget because it's in the TIF, the larger TIF bucket?
I'm not sure how you're using the word bucket, but that the the where it says beginning balance and anticipated ending balance, that's a separate fund, and therefore it's got all of its own accounting uh, around that.
Okay.
By by virtue of this budget, we are indicating our public body will intend to make payments to the owners of the Series A bonds. In the past, we've never had enough money to get beyond the business district bonds. Now we believe we can get into the Series A bonds. And as I said, and then Vic also corroborated, the, our ordinances for Series A bonds indicate payments on December first of each year.
I understand. Yeah, I understand. And I I think I'm just remembering that previously, you know, we had like, we'll say, eleven, ten or eleven buckets. And there was a bucket that said open space fund. So that's, that's where I'm going, where I'm coming from on that.
We do. That's this one. That's this one. And so this one right now has four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in it. And we're anticipating that right now, because um, it owns those Series A bonds that um, in the next year, in the next fiscal year, it would be receiving that.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so, I mean, so that anticipation is then that Archer lot funding would go into the open space the way this is written today, right? Yeah, I just want to make, that's, that's what I, that's what I I thought, and I just was clarifying that for everyone, so.
It it's the Archer lot. It it's in the TIF fund right now. So by law, what happens to the TIF fund, it has to be used for expenses, debt, or TIF projects.
Correct. But it's, but is your show, the one point seven five six million here, ending balance, that has Archer, the payment for Archer lots in there? Okay.
Yes.
That's all I was asking, so.
Yes. I mean, it ties to the previous, the TIF fund that says, you know, it's either inflows to the open space fund or outflows from the TIF fund, which leaves the TIF fund with a very small balance. So um, we definitely want to keep an eye on it between now and, let's call it, December first. With other discussions, if we want them, I to make sure that our forecasts are somewhat in line.
Other questions, comments?
I I have one, and relatively, it's a very small issue, but it's an issue that I brought up. I don't know whether it's last meeting or two meetings ago, and that's about the prosecutor. Um, I posed an awful lot of questions. I believe Anne even suggested that we ought to know who the prosecutor is and and meet him or or in some way. But I've I've never received any, any answers um, to my questions. And and um, I I'm going to keep at it until I get the answers. And um, I have gotten copies of invoices, which actually cause more confusion than than solutions. So in the future, I do want to know about the prosecutor. And who 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 mod- moderate monitors him or her and so forth, but I won't do it tonight.
Okay, that would be, and that would be part of the general fund, both the expense for that and the anticipated revenue that we budgeted.
Right.
I have one question. I'm sorry, Bill.
No, go ahead, Jenny. I was waiting. I was wondering if anyone was going to say anything.
Of course. Um, you know, I'm trying to be succinct here, but so question about, and I know I don't want to bring up a sore subject. But you know, I saw, we mentioned we have twenty five thousand for this Checker Road traffic control. Um, we obviously have a bridge problem. Is there money in the, are we putting any money towards solutions to the bridge collision problem? Um, and could that be pulled out of TIF because it's technically downtown? Or I just was curious.
There is a possibility, I think it would be TIF eligible. I mean, that's the main artery. It's a public way. It's a public structure. Uh, there is an argument to be made uh, that you you could draw it on something for that. I think you're going to end up with likely more of a low tech and low cost solution.
If I may, if if I may, unfortunately, I I've been working on this for the last six, eight weeks. Um, we're we're almo- we're wa- waiting for one final figure on on installation. And 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 then I will present it to the board, but it's not ready. Because I want you to see the whole picture of 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 what what we're proposing and 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 how it will be the the answer to um, alerting someone to their size being too big. But I'm on the brink of it. We hoped that we'd have it today, and and we didn't.
I was just wondering if it could be under the TIF umbrella or?
That, this is Vic. The um, the TIF plan for the downtown already had identified the bridge as one of the elements of improvement. I don't think anyone anticipated the multiple hits that it's received. But the uh, the activities for the bridge could be included as a TIF expense, if you so choose.
Great.
In some respects, the monies are fungible, given the uh, the outstanding debt to the open space and and general fund in the Series A and B bonds. But that is a TIF eligible expense.
Well, the other, the other side of it too is that we do have a surplus in our budget right now. So um, we would be able to put this, you know, if we had to, we could just take it out of the general fund budget. But if we wanted to TIF expense it, we could, so we could recover it.
I promise I'll have all of this by next meeting.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Vic.
Yeah, but the other other thing I will say, though, that just for the record, it's the cover that's been getting hit, which is a separate structure, not the bridge. So just want to be clear on that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the cover has been protecting the bridge. In fact, if that truck got on the bridge, the bridge would have been damaged. So whether it's a beam across the top or whatever, um, you know, somewhere else on the road, it's, there was minor damage this last hit, and the cover is doing its job. So just want to be perfectly.
Thank goodness we put that in.
Yes. Yes. So it's, it's, it's good. And you know, just keep repeating that to everyone, because you know, you could, okay, we put something else somewhere else. Then that gets damaged, and then we're paying for that. So the bottom line is, it was very minor damage. Geez, it seemed like it, you know, with the media and everything, all the helicopters, that something crazy had happened. But when you look at the the two little boards that are banged up, it's pretty minor considering everything. So so it's a good thing.
There's no such thing as bad publicity. Really?
I'm going to leave that alone and.
I I'm I'm going to disagree with all of you.
Leave it alone.
The damage, the damage to the truck was not minor. It was awesome.
Yeah, I'm going to not comment on that either.
And that won't be in the minute.
That's on the recording, but anyways. All right, anything else on the budget? Are we? Point? You guys did great. Awesome. I mean, really did. Thank you for everything you did on the budget. Appreciate it.
You know, Denise did a great job on on laying some of this out. Um, we had numb, as I said, we spent hours, some of it on stuff that we really believe should and can be automated. And some of it, doing a lot of learning, and those are things that we believe we want to do a much better job of archival, so that it doesn't take relearning every year. And as both staff and board turns over, it will be patently obvious where numbers come from, and which ones are done by ordinance, and which ones are done by forecasting and estimation.
Since I sat an hour through the ClearGov presentation, yeah, I know what it'll do. And it's, it'll be great when you have it, so. I learned more than I even needed to.
Sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
It's all good. No, thank you very much. All right. Well, let let me, can I move us along then? Are we, um, if I could? Um, so we we skipped the approving the budget tonight. So we're going to move to a community grant. Trustee Kritzmeyer, do you want to take us through that or or?
Sure, I can, I can, I can kick it off. Um, as you recall, I think it was four years ago, it might have been three years ago. Uh, we as a board decided to establish a community grant program for different um, community groups. And the idea was to encourage new ideas for nonprofits and others that, I guess mostly as nonprofits, who can add to the community building, community spirit, community enjoyment, community entertainment. Um, we had been, I think prior to my arriving on the board, there had been um, frequent uh, budget items, frequent giving money to the Downtown Music and Arts Council, which continues to amaze people, and they have asked for grants as well. But the the thought was, we want to diversify and somehow encourage people to come through with ideas that we hadn't thought of. I, and so we've had a couple on T V and others, and this is another one. The Lake County Symphony Orchestra has been doing a Fourth of July Americana celebration in Vian for several years. And the backers of that have backed away from uh, from COVID. So they had approached um, a couple of the business owners, Mike Marv, the brewery. And Mike introduced me to that person, and he asked, would the village be willing to support that? And I said, this sounds like a grant application to me. And so that's what you see here. Is a grant application for a, an Americana concert for a Third of July uh, with the Lake County Symphony Orchestra. They would, they would do professional sound, public um, publishing, promoting. Would certainly work with us and anybody else, and and it would be open to the public, open air. And um, but because of COVID and the fact that, gosh, there aren't really like performances anymore, they're in need of being able to cover their expenses for this, and that's what they've done. They are also secure, they're also um, pursuing other private funding to, because I think this does not completely cover all of their expenses. Um, but they are pursuing that. Um, they've talked about a potential parade. If so, then Mike Marv and Jesse would need to come back with a special events application, because that would be public. Um, and they will also come back later if there's any, if we approve this grant, they'll come back. If there's any other kinds of things that they need to apply for, for sound and so forth. Um, as that, I've spoken with the head of the orchestra, gave them all of the grant applications and stuff. You have all the information there. They're basically living, you know, dollar to dollar right now, and therefore they don't want to put on this concert anywhere unless they can get funding.
So it'd be a Fourth of July concert, right?
Be a Fourth of July. Um, you know, unlike the, some of the others, this would be a single concert. I do think, I personally think it makes sense for Long Grove, just in terms of character and Americana. I think it could be a catalyst for bringing community together. It certainly uh, would be able to bring a lot of folks and kind of have, you know, like the family picnic, like Ravinia and Downtown Long Grove. But I know, I would love to see something where it's not just downtown. But I think for a kickoff year, you know, that's what they've asked, and that's who they're partnering with.
I I think, I think it's a great idea. I am a little concerned about this parade. Um, and 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 who would organize it and 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 what would be a, it, what kind of a parade would it be of what?
The the grant application is for the concert only right now, so the parade would have to be its own special event. So that would come later. If if they have the funding and proceed with the concert, then a parade could be a yes, no. So that could be a separate discussion. Does that help?
Yeah, okay, okay. Because I I'm just thinking Mike Marv leaving a parade and it's.
Oh, dear.
Not a good picture. But I think this is a great idea.
I gather she John.
Um, I like the idea a lot. Anne, thanks for starting this conversation. Um, I am excited about the idea of a parade. When I, in the town I grew up, they had a doll and pet parade where they asked kids to decorate their bikes with cards and streamers. And the kids could dress up and put, you know, their pets and buggies. And it was, it brought it in the whole community, all of the families would end with, in a fan stand with the Fourth of July. And then from there, it would go into fireworks. So this is, you know, kind of going back to my hometown, and I love it, so.
Long Grove used to have a parade.
Pardon?
Long Grove used to have a parade.
Yeah, I don't know. I get the kids in it. It's fun.
So.
I tell you, Jenny, that I I had the same hometown experience, and and it brought everybody together. If, you know, we had, you know, you put the things on your bikes and whatever.
This sounds like something Amy could organize.
I like it. I could do that.
Amy's going to organize a parade. But again, tonight, what we have before.
Tonight is about the grant.
Is the grant, right? So let's stay on task if we can. The parade, we have more time to talk about.
Do you need a motion?
Well, let me make sure, I mean, Rita, I haven't heard from you. Are you, any comments on this? You're muted. I can't hear you. I'm not muting you, by the way, either. All right, we'll come back to you, Rita. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, sorry about that. I think it's a a great idea. I I like the idea. It it concerns me that we're spending ten thousand dollars on an hour and a half of music. That's, that's a lot of money. That's that's a lot of money for 90 minutes. It and the number of people anticipated seems a little high to me. I was trying to remember when Jesse talked about the chocolate fest, they he was anticipating, what was it, 100 people for 3,000 square feet or I forget, I forget exactly what what the numbers were, but it seemed to be not as dense as 500 people, you know, in the in the back section there of the brewery. It's it seems like it could be a spreader event, even though, you know, we've got more people vaccinated and so on and so forth. I'm all for it. I'm I'm wondering if, you know, we can't sell raffle tickets to, and we and if if we charge money for admission, the contract stated, if I'm not mistaken, that that goes to the to the LC SO, not not to Long Grove. And I don't know if the if the Arts Council was here and they said, we wanted to hold one concert, can we have 10,000? I don't know that we'd say, okay, even though this is this is different, this is, you know, 30 people playing instruments, and I like that. I'm just wondering if if the price is negotiable and the density, can we can we handle that kind of density?
Well, and just one comment on the density, because I thought about that. It goes back into Jesse's property, too, so. They have all that open land, so Jesse will be, you know, working with Mike on that, and so you're gonna go all the way back to like three lots back, right? So they'll be, they'll have a big area.
But what kind of speakers, though, do they have? I mean, how audible is it? Do we know?
I don't think they have speakers. That's a whole nother thing, too.
I know they've done it in Zion before, so they know that there will be professional sound. That's all I've been told. It's certainly not my area of expertise to to vet that. And so I think the the only thing would be if they're gonna, I doubt that they're gonna, I don't think they've set a time at this point. I would assume it's daytime. So you might hear it out on Old McHenry.
Yeah, I thought it was like 10 o'clock in the morning or something. I thought I read that in the in the contract.
Ah, no, and it's not a contract. It's a grant request, but I know I I don't think the time has been set at this point.
No, it was 12 noon, according to the document.
Okay, okay. I remember thinking daytime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris, you have any comments?
Um, no, I I I support it. Yes, 10,000 is a lot of money for one event, but I think it's good to try something new and see how it goes. I mentioned to trustee Kritzmeyer privately, my like, you know, my concern is actually the opposite. Wouldn't it be nice if we had more than 500, which means that the venue is a little bit of a concern for me. You know, to me, if we could put it up in Lemon Hill Ballfields with the park district, we get theoretically a more than 500 people and make it a wider community event, then 10K seems a little bit more justifiable. But that's not really what we're discussing here, so so, yeah, I'm in favor.
Thanks, Chris. Chuck?
I'm in favor. Think it's a great idea.
All right, well, I mean, I think you have whoever wants to make a motion. Bobby, I think.
I would.
Or Ian, yeah, go ahead.
I would say I I move that we approved a community building grant for the Lake County Symphony Orchestra for purposes of July 3, our Americana concert to be held in Long Grove. For the amount of $10,000.
Seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Trustee Micho?
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
Is the price negotiable? Are we gonna try to negotiate, Ann, or not? It's just 10 grand, period?
Um. They've put in a proposal for, they put a request for $10,000. Do you want to amend it?
Is there any harm in doing that?
You know, it's, I mean, it it you can do what you want. It just, I would ask the rest of the board, do you want to change that what's been asked for at this point? Do we need to go around and ask really quickly? Does does anyone want to negotiate this or?
I can abstain. No, I can abstain.
Okay, so Rita's gonna abstain then, okay.
Okay. Hey, trustee Nora?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
And trustee Graskin?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. We're moving right along here. I'm going to skip anything that I might have to say to to keep us moving. But we do have trustee Micho, if you want to give us a brief update from the EDC meeting this morning, that would be great.
Sure. A lot of things are just in the works. So I'm not, I'm gonna kind of skip over and hit the highlight or hit really the most important thing we're talking about. We're talking about kind of like strengthening our brand. And one of the the thoughts of that, I reached out to Bobby about maybe doing like a an Earth Day issue for an e-newsletter and focusing on like the natural areas and like weed or non-natives and planting natives and so. But that was one thing we talked about today, and the other thing is putting together a welcome package to new residents with information, you know, compiling about like waste management, permitting, restaurants, you know, services that you can find in Long Grove and kind of compiling all of this. And I kind of wanted to get a read from you guys, if you were for the EDC, kind of spending some time on pulling this together. Ann and I had talked to Stevenson about doing some research on having the Stevenson students also put together some stuff for us for this. But that was kind of one of the things that we were, we thought that we would spend some time on if you were receptive to that. So does anybody have any thoughts or?
I would just clarify, it sounds from our conversations with Stevenson, they'd be all game to do that, but it would probably be a fall semester partnership. There's only four weeks left of this current semester, and so it would, it just timing wise, that would be done.
Right.
Jenny, I would suggest you check with the HD LGVA, because I I don't know if, you know, I've lost track in the last year, but they were sending something out to new residents.
Okay.
But was it focused on downtown only, Bobby, do you think?
I I don't know. I I never saw what the package was. I would sense that it was more downtown than than anything, but.
And we kind of wanted to focus on like permitting and, you know, government things, too, like how can you get involved in your community? These are boards that are available. This is who you would contact for these questions, so, you know, really not so much business. I mean, that obviously we would list businesses, but also kind of help them navigate moving into a new community.
Sign up for the newsletter, things like that.
Right.
Is is that EDC business?
Well, in a sense, yes, because we would list businesses in that, but it's also kind of recruiting people to maybe become interested in serving on an EDC board, trying to tap new talent moving into the community.
Sounds like something the village should be, sorry, Ann, it sounds like something the village should be doing overall, holistically, not just tapping new talent for EDC, but tapping new talent. And welcome package should be sponsored by the entire village, not not just one piece of it.
We, you know, we we emphasize that in in the newsletter frequently.
Sure.
Well, the problem is not everybody's receiving the newsletter.
Everybody gets the newsletter. We make a point of of that kind of thing being in the newsletter, not in just the e-news.
But it. Oh, you mean the one that's the US mail?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I talked to three residents.
I can't help, I cannot help people that throw away their 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 newsletter. I I can't help that.
Well, no.
I could read it to them.
The point I'm trying to make is that I I think that every new resident should receive a welcome letter from the president and the village manager, both sign the same letter, welcome to the village, we're happy to have you. You know, here's how you reach us, and it and it wouldn't hurt to have some educational type things in there, too, about which they talked about at the EDC meeting this morning, the environmental issues that we deal with here and the different commissions and boards that we have that, you know, we would invite their participation. You know, what's Rama saying, warm welcome to you, neighbor, you know, I just think it it's sort of like, I don't understand why we don't do that.
You know, I had worked with Dave some time ago to do that, and and it was a situation where, how do you get the addresses? Well, you get it from the garbage company for waste management. And and he started to do that, and and then it 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 just kind of fell between the cracks.
Right. Four years ago, I brought it up at least three times. You know, and and nothing has happened, so.
Well, yes.
I think it's a great idea.
I I I think the coming from Bill, I I think is great in in just aiming them to the website.
That would be good, too. Yeah, you know, it's just something, you know, there should be, there should be something that says welcome.
Yeah.
Someone, you know, it's it's not that hard. It's not like we get a hundred people a week. You know, it's not like we get 100 people a week moving into the village, you know, it's it's manageable. So I think it's a great idea, Jenny. I don't care who does it.
Ann, we, Ann, we can't hear you.
Oh, I think from the EDC standpoint, it totally makes sense in terms of like helping to cultivate clients, customers for existing businesses, so that angle certainly makes sense to me, but I also agree that, you know, if if they want to, if they want to spearhead part of this, that's fine, but it it should be more general. It should be from the village. It should be, you know, welcome from the president and everything. And the potential Stevens and partnership, which we, you know, could tap into or not, wasn't EDC specific. It was more Long Grove specific, so I have no problem whoever wants to do it. I totally think it makes sense.
Yeah, I I guess I, it definitely would not be coming from the EDC. I think we had just see this as an opportunity that we could support businesses and but also just kind of help put the pieces of the puzzle together and get kind of spearheaded to move it along.
So Jenny, do you have direction for right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that's, you know, just end of report.
Yeah, we're gonna keep us moving tonight, and I think that we also had the building report, but I think trustee Nora is gonna skip it tonight. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other trustee reports?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Rita.
Yes. I got a phone call a couple days ago from a gentleman named Paul Schonbeck, who was very, very nice. He is a former trustee. I didn't ask him the town. He is also a truck delivery expert, delivery truck expert, and he had two amazing suggestions for our problem, which I thought were incredible. I talked to Jeff about it this afternoon, and Jeff thinks it can work. His suggestion, there are two. One, we construct nine-inch-high curbs, eight and a half feet apart from each other, about 50 feet out from both entrances to the bridge. He said that a passenger vehicle can easily pass through the curbs. If trucks tried to do it, especially oversized ones, he said, they will easily easily hit the rims, he said, probably blow tires. And I thought it's just such a simple, a simple low-tech idea. He said he has seen it in in different facilities that the trucks pull into. And it's very effective, and it's it's inexpensive. Second suggestion he made was you maybe have seen this on residential streets in the city where you're driving along, and sometimes they have a roundabout as a a traffic calming device. Other times, they, what they do is they paint, they use yellow paint to to paint objects on on the pavement that get increasingly smaller as you approach. Your eye tells you that, oh, there's there's something happening here, there's something narrowing, and traffic automatically, you automatically take your foot off the accelerator, because it it appears that the road is narrowing. He said, that's very inexpensive, very low-tech, but it it also is is he said it it will calm down the traffic, it'll slow them down as they approach. And I'll let Jeff take it take it from there, because you had some technical input on it.
Yeah, when Rita and I talked this afternoon, she threw those ideas out, and they suggested that the the next step would be just kind of just graphically, just a map and just put lines on it, what what we're talking about, so you understand, because Rita was, I think this was her conversation with Paul, that the lines, you know, would extend a few hundred feet before the bridge, so just kind of get a frame of reference and then talk through that. I think that would be helpful.
And and the curbs, the curbs would have to be as you approach the stop sign. We were, you know, like further out on on either side, and to do a test, a test part of it, like whether it's eastbound or westbound, wouldn't be that big a deal. And the the yellow lines that he's talking about could work on Checker Road as well. So.
Do the garbage trucks have to get down?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
The garbage, the garbage trucks don't go over the bridge.
No.
No, but.
You have to do it before the bridge. How do you get, let them go down, like by Finch's house?
Yeah, can I, can I ask a favor, too, since we're trying to keep this moving along? Can we perhaps get this one documented and then bring it back before the board, not to debate it tonight?
Yep.
Because, yeah, we can, we can go, this will be about a half-hour conversation. I can see it happening right now. But it's a great idea. Those are other ideas that we can throw into the hopper that are different than what's been brought up before, right?
Yeah, we've been thinking heights, you know, and he's saying, he's saying, you know, just get them, get them at the wheels. And I thought it was genius, you know, it's like, oh, my God, I can't believe this. So, you know, throwing it out there.
Absolutely. Now, another, some great suggestions. Any other trustee comments, reports? Now that I'm gonna keep us moving along, and we have the approval of the meeting minutes from the March 9th and March 23rd meeting. Are there any edits?
Nope.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I I had, I had sent some to Amy. Most of them are just little tweaks. So if you want to do it subject to those minor adjustments, that would be appropriate.
Is there something that you want to tell us what they are? Are they easy to understand?
Yeah, let me get them back in front of me.
Are there any other edits while Chris, or while Vic is putting them up in front of himself? All right.
And which which ones are we approving? So the 9th, the 23rd, are we doing the 25th also?
So this is where I'm confused, because I have the 9th and the 23rd in front of me.
That that's what I have to.
It looks like the 20, the 25th got added yesterday?
Yeah.
If you'd like, I can go through my suggested changes. I did go through all the ones that are in the drop box, which would include the 25th. On the 9th, for item number one, the last sentence has a double negative, so I suggest changing neither blah, 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 nor to either or.
Okay.
On the 23rd, for item number four, wanted to clarify that there were no public comments on the capital budget or or sources or projects, and that the hearing was specifically scheduled to the April 13, 2021, or continued to the April 13, 2021 meeting. And then also for the executive session, it was for acquisition and disposition of property.
Okay. Did I do the, so on the 25th, did I do that properly with the heading at the top?
Yeah, I I had no changes on that. That looked appropriate to me.
Yeah, and that that meeting, those meeting minutes. Yeah, and that, that meeting, those meeting minutes are pretty simple because all it is, is we were having executive sessions. He went into, you know, a regular meeting first, so.
Yeah.
So those are pretty simple. Nothing to really read.
So as I said, those were pretty modest changes, but if the board wants to approve them subject to those changes, that would be appropriate.
I would some of that we approved these minutes for March 9th, March 23rd, March 25th, subject to the changes that Bill's attorney, Phil Pini indicated.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call please.
Okay, trustee O'Reilly. All right, trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Yes.
Trustee Nora.
Aye.
Uh, trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Michelle.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item on the, on the agenda, we just saw this before tonight's meeting is the pay warrant. Did anyone have a chance to look at it?
No. No.
Bill, you were going to make.
Mr. President, what I would suggest, because we, we actually do have three meetings tonight, but two of them are special meetings and the agenda is already published. But if the board is comfortable with approving the warrant as distributed this evening, on the condition that any final, no checks would go out until final comments are received by Thursday. And I'll just poll the board members at the Thursday meeting at recess or before after, see if there's any issues, giving you a chance to review it at that time. I think that would be the resolution of this, this pay warrant at this, at this time.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay warrant of April 13th.
Subject to.
Ending final approval on Thursday.
It's a pay warrant for February, right?
No, it should be, it actually should be dated for today's date.
Okay, it says February 2021.
Well, invoice is from 4/14/2021.
Yeah, I, I'm showing the, the data I have on my pay register that I distributed is 4/13/21 today.
It says 4/18. The, the file is named 2102303. It's named for March. So the, the file name is sort of goofy. The file name is goofy.
Okay. The warrant itself, I think, is, is properly presented as for consideration, the invoice register report for Long Grove indoor estates. Yeah. 4/13/21, I think, is a date on the top left hand corner of the pay warrant that we'd be considering, the one that was distributed earlier.
Yeah. I'll take a look at it. The only question I would have would be about that sign at Martin Estates or something like that, if that's getting paid by Lester's. But I would, do we have an open motion? Do we need?
Yeah, we do. Trustee O'Reilly made the motion subject to, you know, final review on Thursday. Final comments.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. That's a roll call.
So what, what's the procedure if somebody has a concern on Thursday? I mean, if somebody raised their hand and says, hey, I got a problem with it.
Well, we'll remove the items that are concerned and we'll just post that at the next, at the next regular meeting.
So if anybody has any, so if anybody has any concern, that item will be.
I'll just pull it. Yeah, yeah, we'll just pull it. And then we'll re-present it as a, as a, as an A warrant on the 27th.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Michelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Nora.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Yes.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Yes.
And trustee Borowski.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open it up for public comment. Does anyone have any public comments tonight? All right, everyone is very quiet. Then I would be looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and land disposition matters.
That should be. One thing, Jeff, they did the work on Indian Creek Road today.
Yeah, I talked to the township this afternoon and they didn't complete it, but they made a good start on it.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
And if I might suggest that the motion be for acquisition and disposition of property.
Okay, acquisition and disposition of property. Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so that was moved by trustee Nora, seconded by trustee Michelle. Roll call please.
It was O'Connor. Hey.
O'Connor, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was trustee O'Connor on the second. All right, trustee Borowski.
Yes, aye.
Okay, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Nora.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Michelle.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, motion carried. I'm gonna, I'm going to put us in executive session here in a minute. One second. All right, I'm going to assign everyone manually. So just stand by. Hey Sharon, can you, you're muted. I'm gonna, I'm gonna add you to executive session if I can.
Okay, sounds good.
I think I've done this right.
Okay, I'm going to click join.
Are we all here?
Yeah.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Was Village Planner Hoag at the meeting today?
No, he was not.
Right. He was at the regular meeting, though.
Well, he bounced in, but he said nothing and bounced out.
Oh, I didn't realize that. I didn't even see him. Yeah, so move by, motion to adjourn by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by?
Second.
By trustee Micho, roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Micho.
Yes.
Uh, trustee O'Connor.
You're muted. Rita, I said yes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Yes.
Trustee Kutzmeier? Yes. And trustee Borowski.
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned. See you just before six o'clock in Mundeline. Thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Much appreciated.